Call the January eighth, two thousand and twenty four organizational meeting to order. Ms. Jenkins, please call the roll.
President Kalanowski?
Yes.
Mr. Newmoff?
Here.
Mrs. Fuller?
Here.
Mr. McClellan?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
We will begin our meeting this evening with the swearing in. I'm sorry. Please stand for the flag.
The flag is to fly at the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin our meeting this evening with the swearing in of newly elected board members. Ms. Fuller, Mr. Newmoff, and Mr. Wilson. Ms. Jenkins will now administer the oath of office. You can all stand and go to the front. Okay. Do you, Jennifer Fuller, Paul Newmoff, and Mark Wilson solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as a member of the Board of Education in and for the said New Albany Plainfield School District, Franklin County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is chosen and qualified?
I do.
Congratulations. Congratulations to our reelected board member and our newly elected board members. And welcome aboard, Jen. Next, we will move into the election of officers, beginning with the Office of Board President. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Kalanowski.
Are there any other nominations? Do I have a motion to close the nominations?
So moved. Second?
No second necessary. Moved by Mr. McClellan, the nominations are now closed. Ms. Jenkins, please call the roll. Yes, and you get to vote for the name even though there's only one. Mrs. Fuller?
I vote for Debbie Kalanowski.
Mrs. Kalanowski?
I vote for Debbie Kalanowski.
Mr. McClellan?
Mrs. Kalanowski.
Mr. Newmoff?
Mrs. Kalanowski.
Mr. Wilson?
Mrs. Kalanowski.
Ms. Jenkins will now administer the oath of office. Do you, Debbie Kalanowski, Kalanowski, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as President of the Board of Education in and for the said New Albany Plainfield School District, Franklin County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is chosen and qualified?
I do.
Thank you. Thank you. We will now move to the election of the Office of Board Vice President. Do I have any nominations?
Yes, I nominate Paul Newmoff.
Are there any other nominations? May I have a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. McClellan, the nominations are now closed. Mr. Newmoff, do you accept the nomination for Vice President?
Yes.
Ms. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fuller? I vote for Mr. Newmoff. Mrs. Kalanowski? President Kalanowski? I vote for Mr. Newmoff.
Mr. McClellan?
Mr. Newmoff.
Mr. Newmoff?
Mr. Newmoff.
Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Newmoff.
Ms. Jenkins will now administer the oath of office. Do you, Paul Newmoff, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as Vice President of the Board of Education in and for the said New Albany Plainfield School District, Franklin County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during the continuance in said office and until your successor is chosen and qualified?
I do.
Now may I have a motion and a second to approve the two thousand and twenty four Board of Education meeting schedules in items A and B, please?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Wilson and Ms. Fuller? Ms. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. McClellan?
Yes.
Vice President Newmoff?
Yes.
President Kalanowski?
Yes. And the motion passes. Next is Board of Authorizations. May I have a motion and a second to approve Board of Authorizations A through Q, please?
So moved.
Second. Mr. A through O, please. Mr. Newmoff and Mr. Wilson. Mr. Sawyers and Ms. Jenkins.
So I'll start at the first. You are from the Finance Department. The first is to, a motion is to authorize the advance of tax settlements. That's basically the Franklin County auditor collects our taxes and they're not actually, not asking for a loan, they're just giving them to before they do their final settlement. Motion to invest both active and interim funds during the course of the year. Obviously, payment of bills, signature of payroll and disbursement checks, authorize Board Member Service Fund. This fund is created, it's either eighteen thousand dollars or two dollars per student. We always put in eighteen thousand dollars, and that is for any kind of professional development or travel with the Board of Education, and we have to do that based on a higher vice code. Advertisement of bids, author.
Letter G begins the Personnel and Human Resource Elements for Authorization. So letter G is for Authorization to Hire Employees Within the School District on a contingency basis pending receipt of criminal background checks and temporary personnel is necessary for an emergency situation pending the next Board of Education meeting. Letter H is the equal for resignations, the authorization for the Superintendent to accept resignations on behalf of the Board of Education pending the next Board of Education meeting. Letter I is to establish professional development activities for all employees within the school district in accordance with the terms and conditions of employment and our licensure requirements within the State of Ohio to allow us to provide professional development services for staff members in order to qualify for licensure renewal. Letter J is the authorize federal programs. So in order to be compliant with all federal programs at the local, state, and federal level, we have to adhere to state and federal regulations. We do so on behalf of the Board of Education. Letter K is to authorize the Superintendent to serve or by designee in the absence as a hearing officer for discipline hearings up to and including expulsion from school. Letter L is to set the mileage reimbursement rate at the federal IRS level on annual basis. Letter M is to authorize the disposal and/or discarding or selling of textbooks, library books, films, or film strips and all equipment at school due to age, condition, or beyond necessary repair. We check this one annually because film strips is still included. Unfortunately, that is still in Ohioir vice code. Film strips do not exist in most cases anymore in schools. It's actually a dated element. However, ORC has not changed, therefore must be included. Letter N includes a list of all potential legal firms for legal services that will be provided to the school district. Again, this is just an annual list of all the different types of attorney firms that are available to the school district. We do typically not engage with all of these firms, however, they are board approved at the start of each year. In the event services required for some specific element related to a legal matter, we have the option to go to any and all firms that are board approved. Lastly is letter O. It's to approve your membership into the Ohio School Board Association, which will then coincide with the delegate and the alternate that will be named later. Any questions about the authorizations that are being recommended by me or Ms. Jenkins?
With none, Ms. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Vice President Newmoff?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. McClellan?
Yes.
President Kalanowski?
Yes, and the motion passes. Next, may I have a motion to approve board appointments, please?
Second?
Mr. McClellan and Mr. Wilson. I am assigning board appointments, beginning with Board Policy Liaisons, Mr. Newmoff and Ms. Fuller. Government Liaisons for the city, Mr. McClellan. For the township, Mr. Wilson. For Joint Park District, Mr. Wilson. Our Finance Liaison, Mr. Newmoff. Our Business Organization Liaison, Mr. McClellan. Our Parent Organization Liaison will be me, January through the end of May, and then Ms. Fuller for the remainder of the year. Our Legislative Liaison is Mr. McClellan. And these liaisons, so named, shall serve the New Albany Plain Local Board of Education effective January eighth, two thousand and twenty four, through the January two thousand and twenty five organizational meeting. Next is a motion to appoint a delegate and an alternate to the OSBA Annual Meeting. The delegate recommendation is Ms. Fuller, and the alternate is Mr. Wilson. In addition to these appointments are the following committee appointments. Potential levy slash bond issues, Mr. Newmoff and Ms. Fuller. Athletic facilities study, Mr. Wilson and Mr. McClellan. Academic facilities and campus capacity study, Mr. McClellan and me. And communications, Mr. Newmoff and me. Are there any questions on these board assignments? With none, Ms. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Mr. McClellan?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Vice President Newmoff?
Yes.
President Kalanowski?
Yes, and the motion carries. Next is an update on medical insurance availability, treasure documents.
Oh, no, it's not in action, I'm sorry. Yes, this we do every year. Board members are permitted by Ohioir vice code to participate in the school district insurances at their cost, one hundred percent, but we have to announce that it is possible to do that at a public meeting, so we do that at this meeting.
Are there any questions? Now may I have a motion and a second to adjourn our organizational meeting for this evening?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Newmoff and Ms. Fuller? Ms. Jenkins, please call the roll. Vice President Newmoff?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. McClellan?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
President Kalanowski?
Yes, our organizational meeting is now adjourned, and we will take a brief recess and then move right into our regular meeting for this evening. Thank you. Good evening, I would like to call the January eighth, two thousand and twenty four New Albany Plain Local Board of Education meeting to order. Ms. Jenkins, please call the roll.
President Kalanowski?
Here.
Vice President Newmoff?
Here.
Ms. Fuller?
Here.
Mr. McClellan?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Superintendent Sawyers, are there any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda?
No, thank you.
With none, may I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Mr. McClellan and Mr. Newmoff? Ms. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Mr. McClellan?
Yes.
Vice President Newmoff?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
President Kalanowski?
Yes, and the motion passes. Next is an opportunity for public participation, and we have none this evening, so we will move right into communications to the board, beginning with Superintendent's items, Superintendent's orders.
President Kalanowski, members of the Board of Education, welcome back to the two thousand and twenty four calendar year. Second semester is now fully underway, all students are back on the school campus. We will continue the two thousand and twenty three, twenty four school year, but I will remind everyone that January also brings the start of all things associated to two thousand and twenty four, twenty five, and our next school year. So information will continue to come out from the building level related to secondary, dominantly, middle school, high school registration that will impact sixth graders registering for the middle school, for seventh grade, seventh graders, obviously, through eleventh graders, registering respectively for eighth grade through twelfth grade. All of that is now underway. Official registration materials will be forthcoming from the respective building levels to our parents and our guardians at home as we start the course selection and registration process necessary that will then lead to successful staffing for the two thousand and twenty four, twenty five school year that will begin in March. And then very quickly, following spring recess, continuation of another major opportunity this spring for collective bargaining, both with our teachers association and our non-teaching personnel within the school district. So we are actively planning for all of that. It will be an action-packed second semester. We will continue to focus on the continuous improvement plan goals that were established and approved by the Board of Education for implementation as we continue two thousand and twenty three, twenty four, while simultaneously planning for two thousand and twenty four, two thousand and twenty five. In addition to that, information was sent out today. At the secondary level, we will start the parent preview of the substance abuse survey for students in grades seven, nine, and eleven. That information has been sent to parents from Mr. Kramer at the high school and Mr. Freeman at the middle school. The substance abuse preview will happen for parents, and then the parent opt-out information has also been provided. The substance abuse survey is tailored to specific grade levels. This year is grades seven, nine, and eleven, just like last year. The survey will open on January twenty fourth, and it will be completed at the building level during the school day by January thirty first. We will publicly present the data and responses that are received from students, most likely later part of February. So I don't believe it'll be at the first board meeting in February, it most likely will be at the second board meeting, based upon current planning for other presentations that are already in the queue. So, but parents will have the option again to preview the survey, grades seven, nine, and eleven, as well as opt out if they so choose. Happy to answer any questions. The other things we're going to talk about, I'm going to save for what I'm going to talk about in just a minute.
All right. Next is an update on our R factor and inclusive campus culture work, Superintendent Sawyers.
It's my honor to introduce John Hood, the Director of Student Service Safety and Security, who will be joined by the Wellbeing Community Liaison, Mrs. Herman. I'm going to mute it up to be just a second, because I couldn't see the agenda while I was just making sure. So as the Board of Education will recall, in the CIP goals, we have specific elements tied to data progress and monitoring associated to the R factor, the well-being initiative within the school district, as well as the building inclusive campus culture portions of the framework. So Mr. Hood and Mrs. Herman tonight will present a mid-year update on our progress during first semester, so during basically August through December, so that we can understand where we are for benchmark purposes for our mid-year progress review.
Good evening, good evening, President Kalanowski, Vice President Newmoff, board members. I think this will be sort of an update for some of our new folks too. So if you think about families that are new to our district, some of this may be a rehearsal for you that you've heard before, but for our new families, I think this would be good information to help familiarize them with the programs that we've got going on. So it's my pleasure tonight to bring an update on our district that works around wellness, including information on the R factor, well-being initiative, and work in building inclusive campus culture. As always, we'd like to start our, by grounding our discussion and our purpose statement that reminds us that everything that we do is with students in mind, and that we are committed to academic excellence while supporting the well-being of each student. Research clearly indicates, this will be the next slide, now, research clearly indicates that student wellness, excuse me, connects student wellness to learning environment culture. Our work with the R factor has introduced us to this performance pathway that you see here, that indicates that we have each the ability to help create culture, and that culture then drives behaviors, those behaviors then produce results. This works backwards as well. If our desire is well-being for each student, then we need to look at what behaviors need to be in place to produce that result, then work on building a culture that gets us those behaviors. The next slide shows a graphic that demonstrates the performance pathway in this way. Those students' behaviors that help us bring well-being might include good decision-making, taught through the R factor, or the ability to preserve, persevere through struggles, demonstrated through our work with values, behaviors, and outcome, or what we call VBOs, or being respectful of adults and peers, pursued through our district efforts around kindness, dignity, and respect, or striving to give students a strong sense of belonging through our work with the building inclusive campus culture. All of these efforts, along with our exceptional academic pursuits, impact our learning environment culture that ultimately has the end in mind, which is pursuing student achievement, student growth, and student well-being. To give you more information regarding our well-being initiative, it's my pleasure tonight to invite Diane Herman to the podium. Diane's been a remarkable partner over the last several years as our Wellbeing Community Liaison, so I welcome Diane.
So the movement to meet the academic and developmental outcomes for each student led the district to develop the well-being that should have ever set in here to go.
The next slide.
Shows our vision. It's like each student possesses a strong sense of well-being, both physically and mentally, with the mission of the Wellbeing Initiative to empower a caring community with the resources that maximize the physical and mental, mental well-being of each student. School district administration and counselors met with a wide range of community partners to help us identify and implement best-in-practice, research-based programs to support students. This was and continues to be vitally important due to the increasing rates of student self-harm and suicide ideation, drug, alcohol, and tobacco use, and recognition of the effects of mental illness and trauma on students' academic and developmental outcomes. Some of our partners include Adam H, Nationwide Children's Hospital, Concord Counseling, Healthy New Albany, and many more. You can see on this slide.
The next slide, please.
This slide shows the process that we go through. Once the foundation has been set, we identify the gaps in our programming. We then find programming to fill in these gaps, measure our outcomes, analyze results, and celebrate success while looking for opportunities for continuous improvement. A prime example of this is the use of vaping among our students. You may have noticed that I didn't mention vaping initially, I only talked about tobacco. And that's because when we developed this, vaping wasn't really a prime concern of us with our students. However, we started to notice a lot more kids vaping in high school and middle school. We looked at the data, the numbers of students vaping. We asked the question about vape usage in our drug and alcohol student surveys, which showed an increase in use as well as a lack of knowledge of the dangers of this new substance. So we brought in programming, specifically the Catch My Breath Program for students, community forums for parents to educate the community on the dangers of this new substance, and then we resurvey students so that we can recognize the impact that these programs have, and this survey will be happening again later this month. Next slide, please. We now have over twenty programs and practices in place to support our students. One where we have seen substantial growth this year is our Sources of Strength Program. The mission of Sources of Strength is to prevent adverse outcomes by increasing well-being, hope-seeking, resiliency, healthy coping, and belonging. We have classroom-based lessons in the intermediate school led by school counselors, and Sources of Strength campaigns led by students and supported by staff at the secondary level. Another area of focus is our community education, community forums. This has been a continual component of the initiative partnership from the New Albany Foundation to bring in nationally recognized speakers on mental health, as well as parent community education sessions led by with us at the school and outside resources.
The next slide, please.
Yep. This school year, we have hosted already a forum led by experts at Nationwide Children's Hospital to educate trusted adults on suicide awareness and prevention. Our other forums this year will be led by our Concord Prevention Clinicians starting next Thursday, January eighteenth, on the topic of supporting your child's mental health, and we will follow that with additional regulation on February twenty ninth, and Everyday Happiness on April eighteenth. Registration for these topics is on the website.
Thank you. Diane's one of my favorite people, just so you know. She's been a remarkable partner in this work. And if you think back to that slide that showed our community partners, that slide that was just kind of full of organizations, Diane's just been a remarkable resource in connecting with each of those community vendors and have made them available to us as a resource that we can lean on if we take about long-term students. So thank you so much, Diane, for your friendship and your work over the years. You may not be aware that the Governor of Ohio has student wellness as a high priority as well. In fact, beginning in two thousand and twenty, he dedicated Students, Student Wellness and Success Funds to help school districts support student well-being. Specifically, at least fifty percent of these funds need to be used to support physical or mental health services. And then we, the use of these funds needs to be done in collaboration with a mental health prevention and treatment provider, as well as one other community partner that's approved by the state for school partnerships. Our community partners have been Concord Counseling Services and the Educational Service Center of Central Ohio. These organizations have helped to provide prevention clinicians and mental health specialists covering all grade levels for student and family support. As part of our well-being initiative, one area of focus has been building inclusive campus culture, where we have a desire for all students to have a deep sense of belonging here at New Albany Plain Local Schools. The next slide shows us, let's run this through then, the performance pathway one more time. If we have a deep sense of belonging as our desired result, then we need to ask, what behaviors need to be in place to get that result, and then determine what can we do to help build a culture that will get us those behaviors? We figured the best place to determine those behaviors would be to talk to actual students. So we spent several weeks going out and talking with all kinds of individual students and groups. In fact, the Superintendent and I had the opportunity to do this just recently with the secondary-level student advisory group, asking, what behaviors would you see if a student truly had a deep sense of belonging in school? We got answers like, if I really had a sense of belonging, I would have someone to sit with at lunch. My voice would be heard in class and in school decision-making. I'll feel comfortable asking questions in class. I'll see teachers who look like me. I'll be involved in things outside of the classroom. My parents will feel welcome on campus. At the elementary level, we had very similar responses, but they were more elementary in nature, like, I'll have someone to play with at recess. I'll not be the only person who doesn't get invited to a birthday party. The people I sit with at lunch won't make fun of my ethnic food. From there, we formulated five goals that we wanted to pursue to help bring a strong sense of belonging for all students. That's the next slide, which shows, we've got a goal focused around student belonging, another goal focused around recruiting and hiring and retaining a diverse workforce, increasing cultural awareness for all students, teachers, administrators, and staff, increasing student engagement, and then our fifth goal's increasing parent engagement. There's a lot of groundwork that needs to happen to bring these goals to life. So listed here, you'll see the names of representatives from each building that are acting as BIC facilitators to help develop actionable steps that are appropriate for the grade levels where they serve. These representatives have worked very hard with their buildings and produced over eighty action steps that are driven by the goals that we just stated earlier. I reached out to those leaders and asked them to share just one meaningful activity from this year that has helped to build a strong sense of belonging. Here's what they had to say. At the E, the next slide, at our ELC, the BIC team has worked hard to compile a collection of age-appropriate cultural literature that is also contextually rich. We supply around five times per month. We've chosen lesson plans that teachers can easily access, and that comes with a corresponding book. Also this year, we have incorporated vocabulary cards that are in the front pocket of each book. These cards have pictures and definitions. This process has allowed us to continue to incorporate the science of reading while enriching a cultural library here at the ELC. The next slide shows that our primary school students get excited to see their faces and projects in the halls of our buildings. Maybe it's their face pictured with friends on photographs on the wall, projects from class outside their room, or artwork hanging in the walls. Students light up when given the chance to show off the best part of themselves. To encourage this positive sense of belonging, the BIC team has developed and partnered with the whole building in a collaborative work of encouraging our students to be, quote, "a part of something much bigger than themselves." Every student and staff that wanted to participate received a quarter of a circle in class. They did, they were encouraged to decorate it in a way that represents themselves. They could have their favorite food, or sport, or place that they enjoyed visiting, or colors. They could include their names or just fun patterns, whatever. They could include their names or just fun patterns, whatever they wanted. Every single quarter circle would then combine to form hundreds of complete circles. And then this created this beautiful quilt that you see here that brings everyone's unique creativity together for a giant work of art down by the cafeteria. And it serves as a way for us to have one piece of our New Albany Primary School family represented as a part of something bigger than ourselves. At the intermediate building, the BIC team has continued to focus on Goal Five, to increase community and parent engagement. We hosted a Popsicles on the Playground event and a new parent orientation night for our new families with the goal to make parents and students feel welcome at the intermediate. The BIC team also continues to focus on Goal Three, which is increasing cultural awareness by celebrating things like Hispanic Heritage Month through displays and student videos on the announcements. Students have participated in the Trusted Adult Survey and the Sense of Belonging Survey. These surveys will allow us to better understand how we can continue to create a sense of belonging for all students. New Albany Middle School participated in Start With Hello Week, which is designed to encourage our whole learning community to reach out to someone you don't know by just saying hello. Students and staff engaged in activities, challenges, and opportunities that encouraged everyone to build a welcoming and inclusive school culture. Throughout the week, teachers were on the lookout for acts of kindness. When caught being kind, students received a KDR raffle ticket. Teachers distributed almost 300 raffle tickets. In addition, each day had a theme centered around Start With Hello and spreading KDR. Tuesday was Take What You Need Tuesday. Each student received a positive note on their locker. Students had the opportunity to keep one for themselves as a pick-me-up, or spread positivity by giving it to a fellow staff or student member. Wednesday was Welcome Wednesday. Students wore in-a-gear and were encouraged to say hello to someone new. Thursday was Talk About Thursday. We set up conversation starters at each cafeteria table to help build connection and community. Students were encouraged to sit with someone new, or extended invitation to a new friend to join their table. Friday was Friend Friday. During study center, students participated in Start With Hello Bingo as an opportunity to discover common interests and connect with their peers. At the high school, this year's Fall Fest was our best one yet. We now have 50 clubs here at New Albany High School, most of which are student-created and led. Each club was given a booth, and clubs went all out to help educate, recruit, educate, and recruit students, knowing that increasing student engagement leads to a stronger sense of student belonging. Every single student here at New Albany High School has multiple club opportunities to ignite their passions and pursue their interests. And we had more students than ever join multiple clubs this year. It was a huge success, and clubs are meeting now. A sense of community, understanding, service, and fun continues to be the common thread for all of these student-led clubs. In addition, New Albany High School teachers were able to walk around Fall Fest to check out all the unique and wonderful clubs our students are leading, which helped open their eyes into the beautifully unique students that we serve each day. The next slide just talks about, here's where we're headed still as we think about finishing out this year. We have those five goals in place where we want to continue to develop these action steps that are unique to those grade levels. BIC facilitators meet regularly. We're meeting again this Wednesday. They meet with their principals and building representatives to continue to develop those action steps. We're also going to continue to seek student and parent and staff voices as we continue to move forward, knowing that this is a long-distance race. This isn't something that we hope to complete by the end of the year. This is something that we're going to be working on for quite a while. We're excited about the work that's happened in relationship to well-being initiative as a whole, and specifically the BIC framework, and we're looking forward to what the remainder of the year provides as an opportunity in those areas. I'm happy to answer any questions.
John, just so I'm clear, the five goals came from the conversations with students?
It's kind of a combination. We took a look at what was going on in some other schools, so we could sort of see, can we replicate something that's already working well? But then we also took the voice of our kids, of what they were saying, and their concerns, how they think they would have a deep sense of belonging, and kind of molded that into these five goals. It was kind of a long process with a lot of wordsmithing and sort of working through over a long period of time.
And so the goals are housed under the BIC framework?
Correct.
In the CIP?
It's under the BIC framework. And so as we consider that one piece of our growth as a district, the goals are connected specifically to the BIC work.
I was just curious, at the middle school, the community building and the cafeteria, was that successful?
Mr. Freeman's probably the best person to respond to that.
Kevin, you'll have to come to the podium though. Because the Randy Tech issue, so the iPad has to pick you up.
Good evening. So yes, that was very successful. We had actually participated, and it was a lot of fun. We had the questions started all over the cafeteria, and kids thought they were funny. There were a lot of, those questions, there may have been like 50 on the page, and they had a variety of things, like from your favorite foods, your favorite shoes, to holiday traditions and things like that. So it was really good. You know, middle school students oftentimes have a hard time starting up a conversation. And so just doing that activity in itself was a challenge for them, but they enjoyed it. In fact, we participated with them as well, which was also helpful.
It seems like that's, you know, that cafeteria time, it's one of those vulnerable times for kids. So anything that we can do to help, you know, build a sense of community in the cafeteria, I think anything that's working is great. Is there anything else you need from us in terms of support overall?
Overall, I'd like to know what Mr. Freeman's favorite shoes are. I think, you know, for us, I think that question really goes to our BIC facilitators. And that's a question that we ask every time that we come together. What can we be doing to best support what you're trying to accomplish at those grade levels? And so with your permission, I'll bring that same question to them this Wednesday when we meet, to say, how can we best support the work that you're doing at your grade levels?
It sounds like you've got a lot of great information talking to students.
It's remarkable comment, and Michael, I remember the last conversation we had, it's very kid-friendly. They're typically very unfiltered, you know, in terms of how they respond, and you sort of get a real sense of kind of where they are.
Kids are brutally honest. They really are. They'll just tell you, they're not inhibited to have a conversation as long as they believe you're approachable, and they're willing to share. And it's interesting, because even, I have two student advisories, one at the middle school, one at the high school, and then the building principals also have advisories that involve students. And it's interesting, because I have students from every grade level, and my two for grades seven through 12, and they're all very different. I mean, some of them are actively involved in their respective sports, some are doing activities, some are doing activities outside of school. Some of them are APs, some of them are honors, some of them are not. Some of them are career tech, some of them are interested in theater, some of them are interested in cooking. It's just interesting when you sit down and you talk to the kids, and we typically meet for about 90 minutes. I control about 30 minutes of the agenda, so that I make sure there's specific topics that we want information on that benefit us towards the goals of the school district. But then we let the kids have like open mic night forum, is the best way to describe it. And they just go around the table and freely just talk. And if there's something on their minds, something their peers, their friends have asked about, we spent some quality time candidly at the last meeting at the high school talking about bathrooms. And opportunities to refurbish bathrooms, and opportunities to try to help kids respect bathrooms from a student lens. And it was really interesting, some of the ideas they came up with, that then went to Mr. Freeman, to Mr. Kramer, Dr. Maimais, that are now being implemented. One of the things, this is a fun thing, because I like to cook and I like food, the kids talked about food services, and we talk about, not that 14 choices aren't enough every day at the secondary level, and there's probably at least four to six choices at the elementary level every day. We asked the kids what's missing. Like if you have the magic wand, and I had Mrs. Hamilton there as coordinator of food services with Mrs. Hensley, and said, okay, we're giving you the spatula. What do you want that you don't have? And it was interesting, because the kids came back and said, we want a Mediterranean version of Chipotle. And that's how they described it. They're like, we want Mediterranean food, but we want to be able to pick and choose the toppings and the different things that go on it. So we talked about it, and it took Mrs. Hamilton and Mrs. Hensley about two weeks, because we have to order, and you have to meet. And that's the piece the kids don't understand. The dietary nutrition requirements, the sodium intake requirement, and the certain sauce that they're allowed to have because of the caloric intake, we can't just give them everything. So Mrs. Hamilton had to go research for school lunch programs to meet the federal and state guidelines for caloric intake and sodium intake and carb intake. What could they have? So it took about a week, she put all that together, and then we opened it. And it's been one of the most popular lines right now, it's one so weak at the secondary level, but the kids love it. So we asked them, like, okay, and that's where it goes back to student voice, it's really fun that they're just brutally honest and will tell you, we think this. Now, there are things they will ask us for that I cannot do. It's just, you know, no school on Fridays, you know, that's popular, more snow days, that's popular, less homework, those types of things. But it gives an opportunity, when they say less homework, well, let's talk about it. Like, well, what's good or bad? What frustrates you? And it's interesting to hear all the different student perspectives. We gather that information, we give it back to the building principals, and they work on it with the kids and come up with solutions. But it's actually fun.
Again, I can give you maybe some guidance as encouragement as parents to do this. You know, when we go to these meetings that Michael referred to, I would say typically, as we begin, there's just like crickets chirping, you know, with kids sitting in front of the superintendent. But as soon as you validate just one comment from a student, it just opens the door. And then pretty soon, you cannot get them to stop. I mean, it's just, the ideas are just flowing, you know? And so it just has an encouragement to us as parents, when we're driving in the van with a carload of friends, just give them the opportunity to share something and validate, then you hear them, and then you appreciate the concern. And it's not always easy to hear, quite candidly. I think I mentioned this before, we talked with one, more than one student actually, that said, when we asked them, what is a deep sense of belonging for you? They said, my teacher will know my name. I was shocked to think that this student has a teacher who they believe doesn't know their name.
Or to know how to pronounce their name correctly, which is a cultural barrier that we're working on.
I think I mentioned it before, but I started thinking about all the students I talked to every day down the bus loop. Every day, I see the same students that come by, they say hello. And I've had students in my own line that I've been talking to for weeks that I did not know their name. I didn't even take the opportunity to ask them their name. So as soon as I got that from those kids, that changed the next day, you know, I'm asking them, what's your name? So I can be in a relationship with you and that. And it's amazing just to see the change in their cabinets, just when you've reached out to just say, I want to get to know you a little bit better.
So will you continue to try to engage students to get feedback as part of this process?
Yeah, that's a big, that's a big part of this. BIC facilitators are doing this within their own buildings, getting student input, getting staff input, some of the ideas. Michael mentioned that they all pretty much have advisories, including the superintendent's office, where the district gives opportunity to hear. And then when students actually see something taking place after they've given you guidance, and all of a sudden, next week, we have a Mediterranean line going, you know, that lets them know, hey, your voice is valued, and we want you to be a part of this decision-making.
It's encouraging too that Fall Fest at the high school was so well-received and popular, and, you know, our survey shows that students have a much deeper sense of belonging if they have an affiliation with some group.
Yeah. The most encouraging part about that, that they're student, right? So they started a pickleball club this year. Ken would tell you that he's half embarrassed to say that they now have a Taylor Swift club at the high school. So those things are just interest, those things are just interest.
Eagles with the.
That's great though.
Gives them the offer of people to come in and be a part of it.
We're a big school, and it makes it feel smaller.
Yeah.
So John, these are all really good examples, and it was great that you were able to show us the example from each building. So, and I don't know, I mean, there's probably not a specific way to quantify it, but with these things going on, and the fact that we've been doing this work now for a little while, are you, and I know it's a marathon, right? But are we beginning to see, can the administrators, you know, say that we're starting to see some real positive change, that the culture is better, you know, people are being kinder? I mean, is it working?
I think, I think there's a little bit of two things. I think there's the anecdotal information, that the student who was sitting by themselves with their hood up, suddenly now you see them sitting at a table, there's that kind of information that tells you, okay, we're having progress. What Kevin just shared, that said, okay, now that we've had the opportunity, all of a sudden you see people engaging where they weren't engaging before, we see those anecdotal kind of answers. But then I think Katie would tell you that even just this year, just in the short amount of time that we've been doing this, we've already seen just a bump up in terms of what the belonging survey said to, in terms of where students feel that they're coming on this. And that's, that's our desire. It's kind of like we start when we first gave that survey, that's kind of like our personal best, and now we're just trying to inch that thing up each year, you know, as we try to bring a greater sense of belonging to all students.
Thank you all.
Yes, thank you.
Next is a review of our student discipline data. Superintendent Sawyer.
So I'm going to invite Mrs. Snowwach, the Director of Assessment and Accountability, to come forward. We had a conversation based upon some feedback received from parents within the school district in relationship to the kindness, dignity, and respect work that we're specifically doing associated to the CIP, to try to understand what's happening from a daily discipline-based environment. So based upon my conversations with President Kalanowski, Mrs. Snowwach worked with the building admins, Mr. Emery, and Dr. Maimais, to pull some data for first semester for 2023-24. So this is August through December, and she's going to walk you through. So this is new, we haven't presented it this way before, so we're actually looking for feedback, because this is the first time we've presented this information in this format at mid-year. We do a year-end summary, but we haven't done a mid-year progress check, to try to paint the picture and how it relates specifically to what's going on with kindness, dignity, and respect across the school district. So I'm going to ask Mrs. Snowwach to do that for you this evening.
Well, good evening, Superintendent Sawyer, President Kalanowski, Vice President New Moffin, members of the board. It's my pleasure this evening to share an update on discipline data, summarizing, as Superintendent Sawyer said, discipline data from August through December for the first semester of the 23-24 school year. So as always, our work is grounded in our purpose statement to create that culture of accountability that achieves the best academic and developmental outcomes for each student. And this work also aligns in following Mr. Hood's presentation with having the inclusive campus culture and having students feel safe, supported, and connected. So I'm going to go kind of big-picture with, which is our student code of conduct. So the student code of conduct is outlined in the elementary and secondary school handbooks. It's also available on the A and B L S website. The student code of conduct specifically outlines student responsibilities and expectations as well as the discipline code. And as required by Ohio Board of High School, the Board of Education has adopted a number of student discipline code policies which outlines those behaviors that are considered unacceptable, hence for which a student may be subject to disciplinary action. Within the student code of conduct, there are also definitions. I'm going to use quite a few terms this evening. Some of them, you know, are logical, and you can understand what that means, and others of them, it might be helpful to actually refer back to the definitions that are in the student code of conduct. So on this slide, I've just provided a few examples from the student handbook. The definition of discipline terms includes categories of infractions, as well as disciplinary consequences are also outlined in this document as well. So on this slide, you just see a definition for disrespect, this corruption of school, and general misconduct. On the next slide, is a discipline term we often get questions about, and that is the term bullying. There is actually a federal definition of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. In order for an infraction to be classified as bullying, harassment, and intimidation, it must be substantiated to meet this legal definition. As you can see from this definition, the behavior must have occurred toward a particular student more than once. The behavior causes mental or physical harm, and is sufficiently severe, persistent, or pervasive that it creates an intimidating, threatening, or abusive educational environment. As you can see from this slide, any student or parent who believes a student has been a victim of this type of behavior should of course immediately report this situation to an administrator for investigation. We do take that very seriously. Sometimes a student or parent will report a concern and use the term bullying. These concerns are absolutely investigated and addressed accordingly. However, if the behavior doesn't meet this legal definition of bullying, especially an infraction on a first offense, it might be coded as something else, disrespect, for example, or offensive language, or whichever of the other disciplinary terms best applies, given the context of the specific situation. Consequences are still given in these situations, and the behavior addressed, but again, it may not rise to the threshold of this. But again, it may not rise to the threshold of this particular legal definition of bullying. So I just wanted to point that out because we do, questions do arise regarding this particular term from time to time. So on the next slide, I've just started by giving the most frequent discipline categories or subtypes. And looking at our first semester discipline data for this school year, these are the most frequent categories or subtypes of infractions from the reporting that's available in Power School. You can see from here, general misconduct is the largest number of infractions. This would generally apply in a situation of student not following school rules, policies, or regulations. One example might be a student being out of their assigned area at the secondary level, maybe roaming the building or hallway with friends that were supposed to be in a particular class, or horseplay within a classroom setting. Those are just a couple of examples. You can see that while there were 130 infractions, there were 101 students involved. So sometimes we do have students that have a repeated violation. So I just wanted to point that out as well. The number of infractions isn't always the same as the number of students, often it's a different amount. Disrespect to students and staff was at 70 infractions, or 51 students. Turancy, class cuts, and tardies, 69 infractions. The next one, fighting, assault, and contact, I also wanted to define because that can be quite a continuum of occurrences there. So many of the infractions in this particular label refer to physical contacts. That could be anything from a student slapping another student on the playground, or a disagreement in the Gaga pit, or somebody pushing somebody kind of forcefully. So even though it says fighting, assault, contact, doesn't always mean it's an actual, what we might think of as a fistfight or something like that. Often, it might be something, a student pinching, slapping, smacking. None of those are great, of course, and are absolutely addressed, but I just wanted to clarify that there is a continuum of things that might be happening with that. A transportation violation occurs on the school bus. So that could be anything, the student's out of their assigned seat, or they're not following the bus rules from the driver. Maybe they're eating or throwing food, not making great choice. Those could be some examples on there as well. Disruption to school is another one that's on there that can mean a variety of things. Some examples could be fire alarm call, or throwing of property or something in this kind of school classroom setting. So again, that's where we go back to what are the term definitions as administrators are coding those within the Power School system. We're kind of looking at those big categories as they are defined. On the next slide is pre-K through 12 discipline data summary. So this slide shows the consequences administered for the first trimester district-wide as logged in Power School. Again, information regarding these consequences are outlined in the student code of conduct. And guidelines for consequences for many of the infractions are governed by Board of Education policy and/or, in some cases, of Ohio Revised Code, especially for some of the more severe, severe ones. So as you can see, again, August through December with 48 out-of-school suspensions, 13 emergency removals. And that's another category that has a pretty specific definition. So emergency removal is when you exclude a student who possesses a continuing danger to district property or persons in the district, or whose behavior presents an ongoing threat of disrupting the educational process provided by the district. Often that is an emergent safety concern, and we need the student to be picked up right away. You have bus revocation, which would be removal of the privilege to rent a bus for a number of periods of days. You have detention, many of those are after-school detention. Occasionally, you might have a building that has a before-school to work with, I think, but outside of school hours. Verbal reprimand or counsel warned, those are two choices in Power School that essentially are the same thing. We're having a conversation, often, you know, a parent phone call might be involved, and we're documenting this verbal reprimand or conversation. Lunch detention during the school day, during the student's lunch. Saturday school, which is the detention specifically on Saturdays. And then the last category is in-school detention or alternative learning center. At the secondary level, we have alternative learning center, which has a very specific definition. This is where we actually have a classroom with an ALC aide that students are assigned for the day. So instead of going to their normal schedule, their seven-periodal schedule, they are in the supervised classroom doing their work with, you know, this particular supervision. So they're at school, but they're removed from the regular school day. At the elementary building, we call these in-school detention. We just, it doesn't quite meet the definition. We don't have an extra classroom available with an assigned. Some are often, these are held in the office, if the building's not available, so the child can work for a period of time. Great, the administrators are certainly checking on the students, but it just isn't, they're called two different things. But really, in essence, very similar. On the next slide is our discipline data by building, August through December 2023. Just as a reminder that a violation of the student code of conduct results in a, may result in a disciplinary action, which again, has that kind of continuum of consequences, as you can see on here. Anything from a detention, maybe a loss of privilege, a conference with a parent. An alternative learning center, in-school detention, all the way up to an out-of-school suspension, or an extreme situations expulsion, that's not on here. We haven't had any of those luckily this school year. And in certain situations, we could also have referral to police, children's services, or juvenile court, too, if needed. It's also important to note that discipline is progressive in nature for repeated violations. One important thing to note, when you look at the elementary data, it's developmentally appropriate for little people. And there was actually Ohio Revised Code legislation regarding K-3 suspensions. In 2019, House Bill 477 made it so that no school or district is to issue an out-of-school suspension or expulsion to a student in grades pre-kindergarten through three, except for some very particular circumstances. So you'll notice that we don't have any of those, and again, being developmentally appropriate to our youngest learners. You'll also notice that there are a couple of numbers that are italicized with an asterisk. So while the vast majority of our data tracking for discipline is in Power School, we do have a couple instances where we have a separate tracking system. So for example, at the earliest, early learning center in our primary school, they are tracking that in a separate Google Doc. They don't have a lunch detention, but more of a recess detention. So some of the things that they're doing don't even match the terms and categories. It doesn't mean that they aren't, you know, talking with kids, addressing things, having conversations with parents, but they track that in a separate system. But we still wanted to represent the kinds of things that are happening to address behavior. So you'll notice those are included there. And then the high school this year, we had 47 detentions logged in Power School, but you'll notice there is 223, and that is because we have had 176 after-school detentions for tardies to class. That has been an area that the high school is really focused on. We've talked about chronic absenteeism and the importance of attendance and being to class on time and not missing that academic instruction. And so the secondary level has really worked hard to have an automated system that's actually pretty amazing, that tracks all of that, and then sends the student a little notice. So then they can work with Coach Samanich on understanding the importance of being to, on time to class. So that's just a new system this year, and so I wanted to account for both of those numbers in a total and be transparent about that. On this slide is looking at discipline data trends, just comparing the first semester of last school year, so the 22-23 school year, to the first semester of this school year. There are a different number of documented infractions that resulted in consequences. So I do want to point that out. For the 22-23 school year, we have 341 documented infractions that resulted in consequences. And for this school year so far, we've had 540. So there is definitely a different number there, but I wanted to compare the percentages just to kind of look at trends of all of the consequences given. Is there any change in kind of that percentage that we're seeing there? So a few areas, you'll notice a decrease. Other areas, you're noticing an increase. And again, it can go back to what are the actual infractions, the categories, are they fitting in? Is it a first time? Is it a repeated offense? There's a lot that can go into that. And as well as, again, just looking at the particular consequences in this area. Jumped a little ahead on this slide, we're looking at the subcategories then, of what are the infraction categories, compared again to first semester of last school year to first semester of this school year. One of the things I noticed is that there has been a little bit of an increase in the turancy, class cuts, tardies. And this is what's in Power School. So really, there's a much greater increase if you, if you add in the tracking of the tardies at the high school. But that is really an area of focus for us, that we are trying to hold students accountable to make sure they're in class on time. So it's not surprising that we would see an increase in that particular area, since that is an area of focus for us. And you'll see some other areas that stayed pretty consistent on that percentages, and that did drop as well. On the next slide, these are the other additional subcategories, and these are very smaller, very small numbers. This is polled from EMIS, Sub-Education Management Information System. There's a number of things we have to report through EMIS every year, anything from how we did on our OSTs to staff and courses to discipline. Not all discipline is reportable to the state of Ohio. So when you see EMIS reportable discipline, this includes things, out-of-school suspension, emergency removal, and if we had any expulsions, which I mentioned we did not have for this year. This is a five-year report, it's by EMIS, this whole year reporting. So you'll see all the way on the left-hand side, 2019, that's actually the 2018-19 school year. Then the 2019-2020 school year, 2020, 2021. And obviously, we had a pandemic in there and a school closure, and we had VLP for part of that year. So those are all things that would also impact those numbers all the way. But you can see from this trend that our EMIS reportable discipline is on the rise since the pandemic. And then talking to colleagues across the state, that seems to be a common trend. As always, we apply the R factor to everything we do. So getting better every day, reflecting on what we have there and our particular response. So in looking at this discipline data, we do have quite a few things in place. We have our PBIS, our Positive Behavior Intervention Support System across each of our buildings. So for example, at the intermediate school, they have equals rise, respect, integrity, safety, and empathy. And they define what that looks like in the cafeteria and on the playground. So PBIS is a lot of teaching what is the expected behavior, what does that look like, reinforcing it, lessons. They do this at the ELC, the primary. Intermediate looks a little different the older you get, but again, having the supports in place to teach, model, and reinforce. Of course, developmentally inappropriate consequences, given the particular infractions. Obviously, we have our focus on kindness, dignity, and respect, the R factor in our BIC work. We have counseling lessons in pre-K through 12th grade, as well as support. And really, really key are those parent-party partnerships to really modify behavior. So when these things are occurring, obviously, you really want to partner with families. Discipline isn't just about consequences, it's about teaching and getting better every day. And depending on the particular context of the situation, we also have MTSS, the Multi-Tierred System of Supports for Behavior and Social Emotional Needs as well, if that is needed for a particular student. Again, depending on the situation, we have the drug and alcohol counselor. So it is very tailored to supporting and partnering with families. There's a consequence, but there's also what are we going to do to help everybody, you know, get better moving forward. So we're very fortunate in this district that we have a lot of those resources available.
So with that, I'll answer any questions.
A couple of them, I think, we're probably all together, somewhat together. First, I did notice on the subcategories, and I know the numbers have gone up, but the disrespect to students and staff is a much smaller number than it was last year. So I'm guessing that that has something to do with what we're doing on BIC, which is great. So that's, I guess, that is a tangible number to look at. You, you mentioned the increase of this year from last year. How much of that is an increase in actual, an increase in actual events? Or is it a greater focus on tamping down and disciplining?
I think it's both, depending on the category. Absolutely, in some areas, we are holding kids more accountable. And absolutely, as we do that, that's going to have to tick up. I did pull an EMIS report that looks, that's available, that looks across the state. We don't get a whole lot, there's just certain things we can glance at. But looking at that over the last five years, I mean, you, it does seem like there's a rise in discipline and occurrences in certain categories. There could be a lot of reasons for that with the pandemic. But I do think it's kind of twofold. Part of it is we are holding kids more accountable and giving more, having more conversations and documenting that. But I also do think we are seeing a higher number of infractions in some categories, not all.
I guess just more, more of a comment, I, you know, I don't want to sound like the old school guy here. But I, I do think that there's something to be said for, and I appreciate, it sounds like what we're doing here is, I'm not saying this really has zero tolerance, but there are certain activities and behaviors that just aren't acceptable. And I don't care if you need to have two or three documented accounts to be bullying. If you're bullying, and it's, it's noticed and it's seen, I would hope that we are addressing it immediately.
Hundred percent, we address it immediately. I just wanted to point out that it may not always be coded as that.
Right, right.
It doesn't mean it's not getting addressed, that there's not a consequence, absolutely. We take all of those reports very seriously. Here's building principal here before this role, and I work very closely with all of these folks now. And I can tell you, a student, a parent, a teacher, anyone reports something like that, you drop what you're doing, and you investigate that to the fullest extent. So we want everyone to feel safe, supported, and connected on this campus. So a hundred percent, it is addressed, consequences given, it's just not always labeled that. And we are required to report on our website how many instances we have of that. And so sometimes I think people, it can, like, there's a disconnect. And it doesn't mean, again, that it's not being addressed, it is, it just may not rise to that label.
Right. I just want to make sure that people, the people understand that we are taking this.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But the other piece of that is the whole, if you see something, say something, right? If, if your kid is coming home and saying that this happened at school, let us know. I mean, I know we're not the parent, but, you know, while they're here, if something's going on, we need to know about it. If they're not telling us, there's nothing we can do.
We have some great tools in place to do that, like Safe School, Hub Line, if they want to remain anonymous. And when that is filled out, I mean, all administrators get an email, a phone call, the police are notified. So we have a lot of great tools in place for that kind of reporting, too.
A quick question, just to get, not to focus so much on that bullying definition, but just the questions we've had. If you look at your slides where you have the discipline subcategory data trends.
Yep.
Is bullying a legitimate is bullying?
So we did not have any for the first semester, and that's why it's not on there. So there are a couple other categories. If we didn't have any for either year, I did not include them. There are things like, there's not very many more, but bullying, harassment, intimidation is one. Dress code and grooming, again, not to mean that that's not ever addressed, but if it didn't receive a consequence, then it's not in the system. So there are a couple other categories that are available in the dropdown in Power School, but if we didn't have any data for this semester for the school year or last school year, first semester. We didn't have that for other periods in the last five years, for sure. But I was just looking at the first semester of this year.
So, so this is both first semester 2022 and 2023. Of those finite periods, we didn't have something meeting that definition.
Correct, yeah.
Just to ask the question, relative to that repeated behavior, at some point, you learn a behavior, and you look back, and perhaps somebody says something's been happening, does that count as multiple instances at that stage? Or is it?
So it has to all be investigated and substantiated. And again, it's taken very seriously, but through the investigation process, you know, you have to go back. If it's now January, and we're saying that happened in September or last year, we have to go back then and substantiate that that did occur. So sometimes we're able to do that and absolutely address, and other times that can be challenging if there's not, if it's not substantiated.
Again, just to back all the way up, I really appreciate this level of reporting in detail. Appreciate everything the building leaders do, and you see this every day. We don't, we get videos on occasion, and those are disturbing when you see those.
Sure.
So to see this really is helpful. But one, one thought is, is it possible to cut it by building? Or is there a reason we haven't shared at this point by building? I think we've got.
I think we shared the consequences by building with, and we certainly could go into that with, for example, the primary and the ELC with them, documenting there's another system that just kind of makes it a little, not that we can't get it, we absolutely can get it, it just makes it, not, not everything's in Power School, I guess.
And then again, I just appreciate this level of attention to this because I feel like kindness, dignity, respect, and all the initiatives are trying to help. like kindness, dignity, respect, and all the initiatives are trying to help improve the overall culture, and we can see some of those results through the wellbeing surveys. But, you know, I know when I got involved with the school board eight years ago, you know, safety is the biggest concern, and when you see physical altercations, you know, and just like in our academic pursuits, we're looking at every, you know, across all quartiles, how do we everybody for it? How do we get to a zero on the physical contact? And I know that's probably not achievable, but I would love to see us work some of that into our BIC programming, whether that's, you know, you see the video where somebody is provoked, how do they not take it to the next level? Sometimes you can't prevent it, somebody comes after you, but.
Sure.
You hate to see that coming up.
Nobody wants that kind of thing to happen. You know, safe support and connected is very important to all of us. I definitely think our work with the R factor continues, but it's about pressing pause sometimes. And again, there's specific situations where, as you pointed out, a lot depends on the context of the situation, but how can we continue to encourage our students? Press pause, get your mind right, take, you know, a disciplined response, an online response. Those are things that we continue to address and teach, and I know my colleagues over here, you know, continue to do that day in and day out because that's important to all of us. Nobody ever wants to get that call to run out to the playground or whatever has happened. We try to be everywhere at once, and, you know, it's a big campus, and it takes a lot, it takes the village, and it takes all of us, but nobody ever wants to receive, you know, that call. And when we do, we investigate it to the fullest extent and address accordingly. And then it's also the reflection, too. Is there anything we could have done differently that would have prevented this? You know, those are all questions we continue to ask, because we don't want those kinds of things to happen.
Is there education to the students, to the families about the importance of reporting to establish these patterns and also the opportunity to intervene earlier in things that don't maybe feel reportable, per se, but then escalate later on in hindsight, maybe could have been addressed earlier if a student had felt comfortable?
Sure. I mean, I think that's addressed in a number of ways. You know, counselors are doing lessons, and then developmentally appropriate at the early grades. I know through our JIR program, we have things about being, not being a bystander, being an upstander. So there's definitely educational programming that's happening around these topics, depending on the grade level. Certainly, we can continue to do that with our families in partnership with them. I know as a building principal, that was a conversation I would often have with families, and I know many, again, of my colleagues here doing that, but certainly, that's something we can keep brief as a team as well. Are there other ways we can continue to get that message out to families? I don't know if I've covered that, if anyone else wants to address that. But yeah, that's absolutely, we want it to be a partnership with families, and we want to be proactive rather than reactive. So certainly, if there is a concern, your child's coming home and something just doesn't seem right, the sooner you can bring that up with the teacher, or the counselor, or the administrator, the sooner we can figure out what's going on so that we can have that proactive approach.
Mrs. Noah, could you speak to just a couple things?
Sure.
The first, I want to echo on the Paul side, which is, wow, this is great data for us to see. It's, I think it's helpful for us to share with our families, too. I know there's a flip side to this, which is, where does this information go? Who gets to see it? Why are we tracking students?
Sure.
Can you speak to, maybe first, can you speak to, why do we track this?
So it is tracked in Power School, and there are limited people that have access to that in Power School, so not everybody that has a Power School login has access to that, only the appropriate personnel in each building. So often, that's going to be an administrator. At the secondary level, they do allow teachers to also log, like, their phone conversations with kids. And sometimes it's positive logging, too, right? And so proud of, you know, billing and this improvement I've seen in this area. So there's not just, you know, negative consequences in there as well. A lot of, there's only specific categories that get reported through EMIS, as I mentioned before. So how is going more about a school suspension, the expulsion, if we have it, but all of this is also protected by FERBA for privacy. So, you know, we can't go into a lot of detail on specific situations, and that's a harder conversation to have with the family sometimes because you are addressing it, but you can't always go into the detail of how you're addressing it because of FERBA, because we do want to protect our student and family privacy. And so absolutely, all of this is protected by FERBA, and the things that are reported through OD are required by EMIS under higher revised codes, and is a very small amount of the actual discipline occurrences.
And so these records that we keep are really to support the student's development along the way.
Correct.
And prevent a child from getting to the level where it escalated to the point where there's an expulsion or suspension.
Yep. It is helpful from a multi-tiered system of support. So if there is a student that's having a repeated or a pattern, that's kind of a red flag. There might be some support, some counseling, some other things that this particular student does. It's really no different, we're tracking academic data on students and how they do on Acadiance and everything else. This is kind of another way to indicate, make somebody, you know, needs some additional support in a particular area. And going back to our purpose statements, academic and developmental outcomes. And so this is one way to see if there are other supports we need to provide to a particular student for those developmental outcomes.
And when their transcripts go to college?
Yeah, so in the yellow folder, which is our digital, we used to have the old Qinto files that would get filed and boxed, now it is digital. So the log entries that are in Power School, most of those are not, actually, none of the log entries are in the yellow folder, only the severe disciplinary, the most severe disciplinary consequences, where the letter would be issued, kind of thing, would be, and that kind of.
So if a student's transcript gets requested?
That's an academic record.
No exceptions to expulsion by law, so if a student's expelled from a public school district, that is actually posted to their transcript. So that is the exception.
We don't have very many of those.
No. The student discipline history does not follow a student to his or her other pursuits, higher education, career, or otherwise. I mean, that's just, it's almost like, it's, your transcript is a reflection of your academic career, to Katie's point, and it's really what school is about, discipline along the way. And I just want to say that because people forget, and it's easy to forget, but there's 5,000 kids on this school campus, round numbers. To date, there's 348 kids that have made some choices that have resulted in conversations that may have resulted in disciplinary consequences. So that's 300, round number, 350 kids out of over 5,000 kids in the first semester. Generally speaking, the majority of our student population comes to school every single day and does exactly what we expect of them, to be successful in the classroom. However, with that said, we also need to remember, we are a school district educating children. Children will make mistakes. Should they be accountable for their mistakes? Absolutely, to Mr. McCollum's point. However, they're still children. Developmentally, they need to be assigned consequences based upon the infraction for the age range they are within to help them modify the behavior to make a different choice. That's what this is about. And we're still a learning institution, and we want them to learn to make different choices and hopefully make the right choice, but that takes, for some students, a process. So we have to help teach them that in partnership with the parent to modify that behavior. So I don't know of any school district anywhere that doesn't have kids that make mistakes. And sometimes the mistake can be extremely bad, and there will be a consequence that's going to come with that, but it needs to be developmentally appropriate to that student. An infraction at the primary school of Mrs. Smith, with all due respect, is not the same as, that same infraction at the high school by a student that is in first grade versus a senior in high school. The senior in high school should know better than some of the choices he or she may choose to make. So the consequence may be greater based upon the age of the student and the type of infraction. Because at the elementary school, in Mrs. Smith's case, a student might repeat a word that he or she has heard and not know, have zero understanding whatsoever as to what he or she just did, versus that same vulgar or profane word at the high school is clearly understood when it's being used by that student.
And do parents always get notified when there's an infraction?
Yeah, I mean, that's a big part of, you know, what administrators do. So I know, and when I serve as building principal, I know my colleagues here do the same, you know, it's absolutely, you want to be proactive and sharing with a parent, you know, this is what happened today, to talk with your son or daughter and here's why. That communication could look different, maybe depending on the grade level. I know there's a lot of phone calls made, there could also, you know, be emailed from a staff member as well. So the mode of communication might look differently, but yes, we do our best to reach out and partner with families.
That parent partnership is so important.
Absolutely.
Are there any other questions?
Mrs. Noah, one that maybe bridges building inclusive of campus culture as well as discipline, or at least identifying categories of misconduct. It goes back to last January or February when we put in place the app for students to report incidents. How is that going? There's questions from this folder, Mr. McCollum, about how we might make sure that students are able to report, or parents, or, do we have any feedback?
So we have the Safe School hotline, and I think you're referring to the kindness, dignity, and respect app. I don't know, Dr. Remains, do you, or Mr. Freeman, want to, you know, Mr. Freeman's not here.
Sorry, I lost topic.
I just don't have that right in front of me. We added the KBR, our listening survey response, into ClassLink last year. We advertised it, and we told kids that we have it. It was used significantly at the middle school the last half of the year. It was not used at the high school. It was emailed out, it was, there were QR codes. We didn't receive a single response from the high school.
It is still trusted.
Yeah. So right now, it's still on the ClassLink, but we haven't had any responses this year. So it's another area that if we be, it's another avenue that we communicate, but it hasn't been something that's been used. It was used quite heavily at the middle school last year, but not in school.
We can raise the topic again with the kids, but the last time we asked them, and I have not asked them this school year, so I can, over the second semester, I'll put it on my next advisory to ask them the question, but the feedback from the kids generally is, they don't believe it's anonymous. So although they're using the QR code, they trust Safe School's hotline and using anonymity of it from their experiences to report to Safe School's hotline, either through the web or through a phone call. And the majority of those that come in from kids are actually done electronically through the web. They trust that that is neutral third party outside of the school district. They do not trust the QR code that we've given them access to retains their anonymity. They believe we can see who they are because they're using our QR code that was created by the district versus going externally to a third-party site and reporting it back to the school district.
But all those reporting options are.
We still have.
Optimizing for students in their disposal.
But again, back to your point, and Mr. McCollum's, it starts with see something, say something, because we, as a school district, cannot do our due diligence to investigate and follow up if we're not given the information to start with. So if you want to tell us six months later, we'll try, but six months later, we're not necessarily going to be able to discover the same information we would have if you had reported when it occurred. So we need the information, and trust me, building admins are busy every single day following up on all types of things that get reported. We're not lacking reports. We get reports on everything to keep them genuinely busy. And they're smiling, but they understand what that means because of what happens every single day at school.
Yeah, I would echo that. I mean, often, students, when they get off the bus in the morning or at lunch and recess, they will, they will tell you.
They feel very comfortable coming and sharing information, which is important when it goes back to the culture we're trying to build. And in the perfect world, to Mr. McCollum's point, where everyone would just come to school and treat each other with kindness, dignity, and respect, and do school, and not all the other stuff, but we still have all the other stuff that comes to school.
Well, this was really helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Katie.
Now may I have a motion and a second for treasurer's items? Treasurer's item A, please.
So moved.
Mr. Newmoff and Mr. McCollum, treasurer, Jenkins.
Thank you. I'm asking that the Board of Education update in our 457 documents, including the release for employees, it hasn't been updated since 2017, so we need to get it up to the required rules and change in some of the employee contracts so that then your contribution can be.
Accepted. Are there any questions? Ms. Jenkins, please call the roll. Vice President Newmoff?
Yes.
Mr. McCollum?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
President Kalanowski? Yes, and the motion carries. Now may I have a motion and a second for superintendent items A and B, please.
So moved.
Mr. Wilson and Mr. Newmoff, Superintendent Sawyers.
President Kalanowski, members of Board of Education. Letter A for Personnel includes standard employee action items pursuant to terms and conditions, hiring, and or resignations within the school district. Do you want to call your attention to number three? It is the recommendation to approve the resignation for retirement, official retirement for Carol Hamilton, as her coordinator of food services at the end of the school year. So she has given us the grace of knowing that she intends to retire this summer so that we can start the process as we do everything else in January and planning for 2024, 25. So Mrs. Hamilton has successfully served the school district since 2018. She's been a wonderful coordinator of food services. I think she has grown the department and opportunities on a daily basis related to breakfast and lunch programming within our school district. We're very grateful for her services. She's not gone, she will be here for the duration of the school year, but she's giving us the courtesy of knowing she will retire, so we can start planning for the future. Letter B for General Business includes field trip recommendations, both in-state and out-of-state, as well as the Washington DC trip for the middle school eighth graders next November. So we start the contractual process now to make sure that we can get all of the bookings necessary for travel, hotels, museums, everything else that has to happen. So Mr. Freeman has done his due diligence, so that is on tonight's agenda for recommendation, as well as the purchase of student iPads based upon our continuation of the use of permanent improvement funds for the plan that Mr. Boss has presented on publicly as well as posted to our website for the replacement of iPads for students in 2024, 25 that will be in grades one, five, and nine. So those are actually on tonight's agenda as well, so we can start that procurement process necessary to secure them. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Michael Ishni has access to our BIC then.
Yes, District Y. Some are in carts and classrooms that don't go home, but yes, we recycle them based upon grade levels, so some get moved down, some get moved up. But yes, District Y, we have access to iPads across the board, as well as some from book carts that are specifically used for certain parts of testing at the secondary level.
Do the older students use them as much as a middle school student?
Yes. They go home every day, grade seven through 12, and they are used daily. So a kindergarten student's usage is not the same as a high school student's.
Sure.
So the high school kids actually have iPad phones that they've been using, so the pencils and everything else that comes with it. So they're integrated into the classroom on a daily basis.
All right. Ms. Jenkins, please call the roll. Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Vice President Newmoff?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. McCollum?
Yes.
President Kalanowski? Yes, and the motion carries. That brings us to adjournment for this evening. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Mr. McCollum and Ms. Fuller, Treasurer Jenkins, please call the roll.
Mr. McCollum?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller? Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Vice President Newmoff?
Yes.
President Kalanowski? Yes, and the motion carries. Our next meeting is a Board of Education retreat on Saturday, January 20th, at 8:30 a.m. at this location. And our next regular meeting is on Monday, January 22nd, at 6:00 p.m. at this location. Thank you very much.